This is the work session of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held January 8th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. First order of business is roll call. If we could please have the clerk take role?
Councilmember Althouse?
Here.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Howdegie is absent. Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here, thank you. You will notice, well, some of you, most of you would notice, we have a new face here this evening, Mr. Ron Corbin. Welcome to City of Cottonwood.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to introduce yourself and just say a few words?
He offered, right? It was an option. Ron Corbin, I'm very excited to be here as the incoming city manager. I can't express my appreciation and respect for this council to pick me through the process. I'm excited about the opportunities and I see a lot of great things for the City of Cottonwood moving forward. Can't wait to get started. I'll shout out to Doug over here who's trying to work his way to the back door. I appreciate his time and his effort to help the transition and I just see a lot of great staff and I'm excited about stuff that's getting ready to happen, so.
Very good.
Let's do it.
Good, thank you. Well, we have a pretty light agenda tonight, just to break you in easy, but don't get used to it. Okay, we have two items on the work session tonight. The first, these are for discussion, consideration, possible direction of staff. First item tonight is discussion and direction of staff regarding the regulation of food trucks and other mobile vendors. Evening.
Evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I was told to make this quick so everybody doesn't get hungry and demand the food trucks show up. Just to recap, if you remember, this came before you in October for a work session discussion on the new House bill, 2371, that was passed in May of 2018. Basically giving food trucks a lot more freedom than they have, restricting what cities, counties, towns can do on regulating them. Some of the options that we do have are restricting residential zoned areas from allowing them to operate in within 250 feet of those areas or anywhere in between that 250 feet. Council wasn't too fond of restricting that, so direction was to tone down the draft ordinance to be the bare minimum of what the state law does require. Our current ordinance or municipal code for chapter 5.17 does not currently meet state law, so it does have to be changed, but you've been provided our those bare minimums. We are open to questions. You've also been provided with a draft ordinance from the League of Towns and Cities on what they came up with between the last work session and this one. It wasn't as available at that time. It was very draft format. This is more of a final, what we've been given now. Hopefully you've had a chance to read through that. If you have any questions on it, I'm here to answer them. Hezekiah Allen's here as well to give perspective from Parks and Recreation, how that might affect those locations, specifically Riverfront Park, which is zoned mostly residential.
All right. Council, do we have any questions right now for staff?
I did, actually, but it's the question for Hezekiah, how it will affect our events that are held down at Riverfront Park. And then people probably know I'm referring to Thunder Valley Rally specifically, but he's right behind you.
Just to clarify too, some of the things that are in this draft ordinance provided to you are what we still can require, business registrations, certificate of insurance if it is on public city property with the events or city right of way. So those are in there, have been in place as well.
Okay, thank you. Evening.
Evening, Mayor, council. With respect to special events, we have a couple of mechanisms. One, within the ordinance, we can enact the residentially zoned areas, which we would recommend as a department. That gives us the means by way to manage the process of allowing food trucks in and how we allow food trucks in. By no means are we trying to restrict the industry, and in fact, that's the opposite of what we're trying to do. We're trying to manage it. And the other mechanism we have is through the tentative user permit process through the City of Cottonwood and designating that area as a specialty event area, so.
So same with Old Town, when walking on Main or, because I would think down here is considered pretty residential, too.
That's where we start getting into some of the fine intricacies of this. Technically, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, 250 feet on one side would affect the west side or the east side of Main Street, but not the west side of Main Street. So no, that would not work necessarily in Old Town, but what we could use in Old Town is say there's an adverse parking situation and just say potentially no food trucks are allowed in Old Town. But I would leave that for the city attorney to clarify.
That'd be problematic, actually.
And I typically like to also to keep it as minimum as possible, and I think Councilmember Henry had mentioned, and I kind of agree with her, just the spirit of what she'd commented on regarding this at one time, if I'm remembering it properly, is just, I hate to regulate something or prohibit something if it's not a problem. We can always come back and make something more restrictive if we see there's a problem that needs to be addressed, but I hate to overregulate, just trying to guess what might be an issue.
I agree.
Agreed.
Thank you, Hezekiah.
I would like to ask council and just clarify, because you do have that option, as I mentioned, to restrict all residential and/or within 250 feet or anything in between. The biggest question would be, are you looking to restrict it in residential, but do away with 250 feet requirement, meaning that a commercial zone that is adjacent to residential, they could still do it, they're just not in the actual residential zone?
Why would a food truck want to operate in a residential zone? I mean, it's.
Most wouldn't. I couldn't imagine that they would want to. They wouldn't probably get a lot of traffic, but who knows? I mean, there's always that potential.
I would tend not, again, in the spirit of that same thing I mentioned before, just not to restrict that and see how it goes. If it becomes a problem, if citizens call up, they've got a food truck in my neighborhood and it's really bothersome, then we can address that. Because 250 foot, it's, that's a pretty long distance, really.
It is, and with that map that you were provided, it does exclude a lot of the northern half of the city.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Matthews and Henry on this.
Agreed.
To move forward with the draft that you've been presented, no further restrictions?
Yes, I believe that's.
I did appreciate the reviewing the draft ordinance from the league. I do think if certain areas become a problem, like one clause was trash and littering, they do have some verbiage in there about some requirements. Again, I don't, I think it's clear how I feel about regulating without a problem, but I do think that was good, helpful to review if we do have issues in the future, so.
So we'll look at changing the current ordinance to meet the new House bill, and if problems arise further, we'll address it then. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the pre-budget presentations from the following city departments. We have city clerk, finance, human resources, information technology, purchasing, economic development, and natural resources. Hello.
Hello, good evening, council. I'll introduce myself. I'm Kirsten Lennon, financial services director. And tonight, we're gonna hear from these departments that are listed on your agenda, and they're gonna go in that order, and I'm gonna let them introduce themselves. And then they're gonna give you their goals and accomplishments, the goals for 2019, current year, which is obviously gonna be some projected goals since we're not even just halfway through. And then their goals for 2020 and their performance indicators and any issues or any challenges that they're currently faced. And we're gonna start with the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and for the public out there that may not know who I am, I'm Mary Ann Jimenez. I'm the city clerk for the City of Cottonwood. My department works directly under the city council and is comprised of myself as a city clerk and a deputy clerk. The city clerk is the official record keeper of the city council's proceedings and keeper of the official documents. My department compiles and prepares the information packets for all council meetings. We produce summary and official meeting minutes of all council meetings. And we produce and post agendas according to state law of all city council meetings. We provide research and information regarding city records to the council, staff, and the public as requested. We process all city liquor license applications. New applications require posting for a certain number of days at the actual location of the business that's requesting a liquor license. We conduct all city elections and provide information to candidates who are running for office, as councilmember Matthews and Mr. Hulse experienced this past year. We assist the city attorney with research and clerical support. I manage the city's community garden. I have for the past, I think it's going on four years now. And we provide general information to the public on an as-needed basis for walk-ins and phone calls. The accomplishments for my department for this past year have been successfully administering the city's 2018 primary election, which included the preparation of candidate nomination packets and general information regarding running for council. We've provided newly elected officials with orientation and information regarding council meetings, council packets, got them registered for newly elected officials training. We set up the presentations for city boards and commissions to chairpersons to report to the council on their respective boards endeavors for the years. That was one of the strategic initiatives that the council had from last year's strategic plan. I've started to set up their presentations for this coming year. We'll have the first one in February, following the council retreat. I coordinated this year's city council retreat, 2019, which will be held later this week, prepared the city council's float for the 2018 Christmas parade, decorated the city Christmas tree with assistance from Sandra, and coordinated the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. We anticipate processing approximately 30 liquor license applications, new and special event this year. I attained the designation of master municipal clerk from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. This is an advanced continuing education program, which requires an extensive educational and professional contribution component in order to attain the designation. And at the community garden this past year, I coordinated and assisted with placing weep cloth and woodchips under our shade structures that were installed the prior year. Goals this year are to train the council in the use of the novice view board, which will allow council to directly access draft information that's being submitted through the process by staff. And it also saves time, because right now we have to go in and manually put in bookmarks for you to bookmark and get to the information from the agenda. So that will save us time and that you can, if you go into the board view, that it automatically has the bookmarks. And other goals may be determined after the city council retreat.
Very good. Any, any other expenses you're anticipating this year or anything?
No, I've not, I'm not, I don't plan on budgeting for any software or anything else other than the minimum running budget for office supplies, postage, and so forth.
Okay. All right, any questions from council?
No, I have a comment. I don't think anybody, and I'm sure everybody up here would agree, could get through that candidate process without your help. It was phenomenal. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also didn't realize you received your designation as a master municipal clerk, so congratulations.
Thank you.
They must give you some sort of plaque, don't they?
Yes, and they usually send out big announcements and all that, but I didn't have that done.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. If there's nothing else, then we'll go ahead and move on.
Hello, good. I'm gonna talk about the finance department. The finance department staff is myself, and Ellen is the budget analyst and half of an administrative assistant. Our objectives are basically to maintain the finances, to provide a budget, to make sure all the bills are taken care of and that the finances of the city are well maintained. Our accomplishments for fiscal year 2019 are obviously anticipated. We hope to complete the FY18 audit, which is in its final stages right now. I should have a final draft by the end of the week. We collab, we're gonna collaborate with the city council and staff to develop a comprehensive budget. We are, this year, we reviewed our website and our webpage in particular to make sure that it was easy to navigate and to figure out where they could find the information. We reached our 15th year anniversary of doing the communique, although I tried to give it away, I got that. We are hoping and anticipating to receive our 28th certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the 2018 audit in CAFR. We are also anticipating to receive our 19th distinguished budget award presentation from GFOA. And we hopefully will continue to successfully facilitate the City of Cottonwood in maintaining an AA bond rating. Our goals for 2020 are to complete the City of Cottonwood's fixed asset audit and to develop our own internal biannual audit procedures. And then prepare and submit for the 2019 CAFR award, once the audit is done next year. Prepare and submit application for the GFOA 2020 budget for the 20th award for that distinguished budget. We are hoping to start employing an extending budget module in our financial software that allows departments to build their budget in the software by line item. And then we hope to streamline, continue to streamline this budget process with more information. And then to develop a presentation program to inform citizens of the budget process and hopefully to get more citizen engagement in the budget. And that is all I have. Oh, I will say that our one challenge is lack of staff. We are very short-staffed in the finance department. We used to be three, now we're down to two, and that is something that we definitely will be requesting during the budget process.
Any questions from council for Ms. Lennon? Can you speak a little bit about your, what ideas you have to inform the citizens of the budget process?
Right now, my current plan is just to try to get more presentations in different locations instead of just at council meetings. Maybe do a couple at the rec center, maybe try to see if we can go to other organizations and present the tentative budget or the final budget to them, so they at least can see the, you know, the financials and see what's happening and what's being budgeted, instead of it just being at a council meeting, which sometimes they don't attempt.
Mayor, if I can add to that, I learned today that we are also taking these work sessions and they're gonna be on Facebook, so they are being recorded. So these department meetings are gonna be more available to the public also, and we haven't had a chance to meet. It's on our agenda for tomorrow to talk about additional goals for FY20 for the budget process. So I think we're gonna learn more over the next couple of days, and then I think we'll have even a few more changes and opportunities to improve public participation.
Great. I think it's really important. Yeah, thank you.
So I have a question now, and I may be putting you on the spot, Ron, but our work sessions weren't recorded in the past. Is it just the budget work sessions that are gonna be recorded or all work sessions?
I understand the budget. Yeah, the budget process.
And we did do the budget work sessions last year as well.
I can't remember yesterday.
We started, we started last year doing the budget work sessions, just to get more info out about the budget.
Okay. I was just curious, because I forgot.
Until you saw the camera.
It was just yesterday.
Yes, please.
In the packet, one of the goals is to start utilizing the extended budgeting module. Can you describe what that does?
It's basically in our software, you can go in and each line item, you can say, okay, I know we're gonna spend this, 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 and this, and you can put them, list them in the module, and then it totals it to give you a budget dollar value. And then next year, when you go to look, you can go, oh, yeah, I budget this, this, and this in this line item. They're about this much. And it just keeps, helps you keep track of where you are budgeting items in your budget, of what your expenditures are.
Is that something each department could utilize or?
Yeah, once we set it up, they would have, because all the departments have access to Springbrook, our software, and they can get in and look at, and look at their budget and look at all of their line items anytime they'd like. They have access to that. So this will just be another tool that they can use to help them build their budget.
Okay, and then the goal to complete the audit of the city's fixed assets, is that also done through the Springbrook software? Is that a different?
We actually hired a, we had a contract with someone who was doing, helping us do the fixed asset audit two years ago. And we just never like completely completed it. He ran out of time, and then we just need to finalize that, and then we will set up a plan to go back and look at all those items every two years and make sure they still are there. Or, you know, oh, yep, it's time to get rid of this and we need to take it off, or just to make sure. And it's kind of a grant thing, too. You have to have an audit of those items. And for a lot of those grants, transit grant in particular, you're supposed to be keeping a list and auditing it internally every two years.
Okay, thank you.
Getting back to the budgeting module, do you anticipate that will alleviate some staff time? I mean, some time in your department?
I don't think it'll alleviate any of our time.
Okay. It'll make it easier for departments.
It'll make it easier for the departments to be able to plan their budget. It'll still be the same for us. It's not really. Yeah, it just gives really history for them, so they can look it up.
Got it. Okay. All right, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Human resources is up next. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Amanda Wilburn, the HR director. HR falls under the direction of the deputy city manager. HR has two and a half employees, myself, a specialist, too, and the other half of. We are responsible for personnel, employee benefits, employee training and development, risk management, administration of the city cemetery, and any other special projects that get assigned throughout the year. I am going to start off with some of our fiscal year 2019 highlights. In fiscal year 2019, HR procured and implemented Civic HR. Civic HR is an applicant tracking software that's integrated into our website. So that has allowed us to make our internal process much more efficient and has made applying to open positions easier for applicants on the outside. HR also organized safety days, which integrated five hands-on trainings led by employee experts into one day of training. So implementing them into one day of training helped limit the disruption of each department's business by only having one day of training instead of five different days. And it helped us meet our training requirements as well. HR also organized the selection of the NOVAP consulting group to hire our new city manager. In conjunction with the contracting and purchasing administrator, HR has also been researching contract and certificate of insurance tracking programs, which will help us better stay on top of contract renewals and certificates of insurance, because we need to make sure we're managing the city's risk and liability. So looking ahead, one of our goals for this year then is to actually implement a program, now that we've done our research, to help us with the contracts and purchasing, or the contracts and certificate of insurance tracking programs. We're also going to be working on creating a more enticing environment for our employees, so helping them really understand what we have to offer and making sure that they feel good about working for the city. And then finally, we're also going to be working on developing a better recruitment strategy for employees and try to better utilize the free resources that we have available to us. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
I just had one question about the, your recruitment strategy. Can you give a little bit more detail on that?
Sure. I think right now, in general, HR does not completely the bare minimum, but we do what we have to do to get things posted. We do post in different resources as well, but I feel we can do a better job. And part of the way, part of the reason I think that's been happening is we've had kind of a lot of turnover in our department so far. So it's been difficult to spend the time to actually find all the resources we have available to us. So we're kind of transitioning and we just know we can make it better. It's not that our process is bad. It's just there are lots of resources out there that I know we could utilize better.
Okay, like what's, what kind of resources are you referring to, like?
So right now, when we post our jobs, we post them on our website, on Facebook. We send it to NACOG, DES. We send it to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. Depending on what the position is, sometimes we post on specialty websites to like, like a CMA for city manager, things like that. But I think that there are a lot of things out there that we don't even know about. For example, ELGL, the engaging.
Right.
Yeah, I can't remember what it stands for now. But Jen from the NOVAP group gave us that resource and pointed that out. So I'm positive there are many more resources out there that we could utilize like that that we just don't know about, because we haven't had the time to really look at our process again.
Got it, okay.
It's just been a while.
The reason I ask, I think it came up a lot during our retreat two years ago, was that, you know, attraction retention is something that all industries struggle with here, so it seems like there'd be a good opportunity, too, to collaborate and work with other larger organizations in the recruitment process.
I agree.
And I appreciate that you recognize that. I know generally HR's a reactive department. Somebody leaves and you react to that, and it takes a little bit of a struggle and some learning curve. So now that you've got that all taken care of, I think you'll probably get out there and find some really neat opportunities for recruiting.
I think so, too. I think we can do better.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, information technology, you're up next.
Don't go to sleep on me.
No, not at all.
You'll see a small three-page excerpt from us. It's not a long presentation. Mayor, council, I'm John Carter. I'm the information technology director. So I'll go through this as quickly as I can. The general information which you have in your packet, but I'll read for the folks at home. The information technology department maintains all computer equipment and computer software, as well as the maintenance of all city servers, under the direction of the deputy city manager. IT services is also responsible for researching new technology and software updates and implementing these changes. Additionally, IT maintains the city website and mobile app, and other services provided include GIS mapping support and radio and microwave support and maintenance. It's a mouthful. We have six full-time employees plus myself as the director of the department. So quickly, I'm gonna go ahead. You've all read this over probably, and we can go over questions later, but I wanna move right to the packet I gave you. So what you see there is just an introduction of kind of how we do things. And one thing I'd like to point out about this, this is my pyramid of success, is what I call it. These, the different levels, the basics, the reduced costs, and the leads, those are not independent. They do support each other, but these things all kind of happen together. We have to do all these things. So the basics are the things like network, email, phones, internet, that sort of thing. In other words, to the right, you'll see get out of the way, right? So we don't want to cause problems. We don't want to cause outages. We don't want to keep you from doing your jobs as the city. So the second level, once we've got that kind of under control, we can move to reducing costs. And that's where, if you see to the right there, get in the way. In other words, if we can add value, great, we're going to do that. And once we've done those things, then we can really move into a transformative role. And that means helping these departments innovate, helping them do their jobs better, helping them do things like Indeed to get people from across the country, as my department's had to do because we have some of those recent challenges. Moving on to the second page, we'll move on to more of a strategic plan for the department. The vision, to positively impact the community through the intelligent application of the information systems management. Now, we do this through drawing on our expertise, our experience, our education, and we diligently manage the information systems in an attempt to support the city vision of inspiring a vibrant community. Our mission, to partner with our city departments and help drive that innovation, as I said. And we do that by constantly seeking to apply the technology and efficiently and effectively to solve issues. We continually innovate in an attempt to spearhead efforts to solve issues and improve the community as a whole. Our goals, we want to move from a reactive to a proactive technology stance. We want to build redundancy and resiliency into the technology. We want to build partnerships with city departments and other entities without the community. We want to continually assess systems for efficiency, effectiveness, and opportunities for improvement to drive the value proposition there. And I manage that department to do, to really achieve, achieve the true transitional progress. So I want to move on to the trends. I'm trying to get into five minutes. I haven't done it so far. So before I got here, before 2019, we had a very challenging network and hardware environment. We had a relationship between IT and some departments before I arrived that was not the greatest. That we had a lack of technical expertise and experience. And we had to resolve many internet access wireless and network communications issue. And this translated into outages, right? The phones were down a lot, the internet was down, whatever. And there was an underinvestment in information technology. So our, kind of our current situation, I've been here about two and a half years now. So we had a network reconfiguration project, which is a year and a half long project that we finally completed in November. We had a phone system reconfiguration. We're now on a single phone system that actually works very well. We have cloud-based data backup, so we're doing protection of our data a little bit better. We spread it around the city already within, internally to the network, but now we're backing it up outside of the network to give us some failover and security. We have a secure encrypted Wi-Fi for employee access. So now anyone who connects to our Wi-Fi that's an employee will have secure, it's encrypted from start to finish. So we don't lose that data and have any breaches, hopefully. Our, then moving on to things that we're in progress, we're wireless reconfiguration. We're trying to build out the guest Wi-Fi so that citizens can get more access near the government buildings. We expect to finish that within the fiscal year. The email server configure, reconfiguration to keep that and make that more robust and keep it secure. Where we should expect to finish that within the fiscal year as well. The project management methodology I've implemented, that's going to keep us on track. It's going to keep us finishing our projects on time, getting things done within budget, which I know is very important. And also helping other departments get their jobs done. And then the careful targeted recruitment that I've done, it's, we've, we're able to raise the functional level and reduce the costs. The functional level being the technological expertise we have in-house, rather than having to pay for expertise out of house that then leaves after the project's done. We now have technical expertise in-house and we continually train. And that's going to keep that techno, that technology, it's going to improve it as we go over time. And it's also going to keep that knowledge in-house so we can build a more robust system in the end. We're ongoing refined management of the team to achieve a higher standard. Some of our folks are getting certifications in their field. We're also doing internal trainings with ourselves in the technology. And we're also starting to train the other staff on how to use the technology so we can get more out of it, hopefully. So partnering with other departments is kind of a given. But we also are leading efforts in the Verde Valley. For instance, our GIS technician, who's an expert in his field, quite a good expert in his field, kind of over his job, technical expertise, he was contracted out to help Camp Verde because they're having trouble with their GIS. So we're helping our partner communities and trying to help the whole valley kind of raise the level here. So moving forward, where are we going? So we're moving out of firefighting mode towards a more resilient ecosystem with our systems. We're completing the overhaul of Active Directory, and I know hardly anyone knows what that is, to enable further efforts. But that's sort of like the operating system of the network. It kind of makes everything run. It's what gives you permissions to get to things and that sort of thing. We're extending guest wireless and extending GIS services to further citizen engagement. And we're strengthening partnership with our departments to streamline the information systems purchase and management process. So we're starting to take over some of that so we can centrally manage, get collective bargaining will help us get better prices on things, that sort of thing. And we're spearheading innovation to provide strategic advantage, and again, to extend strategic advantage and to extend the citizen engagement. And now, I'll take questions. Do you have any?
Any questions?
I do. What, can you give me an example of extending citizen engagement? Give me examples of that means.
Certain things like the Facebook Live, for instance, is always a good one. Because hopefully now, if citizens don't want to take the time to come down here to go to a meeting, they can just turn on the computer and watch it. Things like the mobile app where we have things, there's a part of the mobile app that does where's my bus? So if you're waiting for the bus, you can open our mobile app, hit where's my bus, and it will show you real time where the bus is.
Very nice.
It's a really neat thing. We need to do a little more marketing with that, but that's part of that.
So more, more out of curiosity, your GIS system, I, I use Yavapai County's GIS almost daily. And it's, it's phenomenal.
They have an award-winning GIS.
Oh, it's, it's better than anybody else's GIS I've tried to use. But what is the city's GIS particularly, and what does that do, and what's the benefit?
So Gregory Emmanuel is our GIS technician. He used to work with Esri, who makes the GIS products, the prominent GIS products in the world. So he works with the county and concert with them on several things. A lot of it is public safety. A good, a good portion of his job is public safety. So he builds the maps that, that the 911 folks use to then dispatch out for all of our fire agencies, we dispatch police. That's the majority of his job, but he also does GIS projects for in-house. For instance, Casey will be showing you a map a little later that Gregory produced for him. He worked closely with Scott, who left, I guess, Scott from Planning and Zoning, who also does a little GIS. They work together to produce maps for the Planning and Zoning Department and virtually every department. I think Gregory produced the bicycle map, I think, for you guys and.
Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing out on a resource.
When I talk about extending, we're extending in the public service realm because we're having to do some upgrades and we need another GIS system to make that all work. But also, we're looking to extend a little bit to do maps of things like the parks in town that could be put on the website so folks could find the parks, find the amenities in those parks, that sort of thing. That's how we're, another extending the services.
Great. And I wanted to ask about the mobile app and, and ask you how, how that's going.
It's tough. The engagement, the marketing's been pretty low-key at this point. We've done it at some of the, the events like National Night Out. We did it at Thunder Valley Rally. Some of those events though, you get a lot of folks from out of town who won't use the app very much. We have had a few uses. We have some questions on it. We get, we've got a few questions submitted through it, which is kind of nice. Because one of the other features, talking of this extending citizen engagement, is someone could take the app and they can go take a picture of like a pothole or a tree that's down, and then they can just send it to us. And then we can have Paul Brooks or whoever go take care of that. So we've had a few. It's not been great. But that's another one of the, the areas we want to expand.
Okay.
I don't think that's available on Apple yet.
Sorry?
That's, is it available with Apple?
The app is available with Apple. It is a very tough install. We're working with the company that created the app because they also do our website.
Okay, I looked for it recently, but I couldn't, couldn't find it. I guess that would be it.
I can help you.
Okay.
Yes.
If I could make a suggestion, I think it'd be really great if you did an inside cottonwood or something similar to get that out there, to say what's available out there, to get our citizens to a little walkthrough. Here's what we've got. Work with Ryan to show on his little monitor what people can get into. I mean, it's, it's pretty well-watched. And I think that'd be a great way.
I think we were planning. I'm a very reluctant TV personality.
You'll be fine. It's like sitting down next to the city manager talking.
You do a good job, John. You do a good job.
So what, what, what of the app is most used? What, what feature of the app?
I would say it's probably, we don't get great analytics, which is another issue we're working with. But the part where they, they see city council agendas, that seems to be the most.
Okay, that's encouraging.
Interesting.
Okay. All right, well, good. Thank you. Anything else from council?
Is that because we're the only ones using it?
Yeah, probably. I only recently learned what an app is, actually, so someday I'll do it. Thank you. Okay, purchasing. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I say our largest department?
Yeah. I like to say I'm a department of three. It's me, myself, and I. All joking aside, I'm Jeff Cook, the Contract and Purchasing Administrator. Tonight, I'm going to be giving an overview of the Purchasing Division's responsibilities and role within the city, as well as highlighting some fiscal year 2020 goals and 2019 accomplishments. The Purchasing Division is a one-person department. I report directly to the Deputy City Manager. And I feel that the Purchasing Department has three major areas of responsibility. First and foremost, number one at the top of the list is to maximize the effectiveness of our citizens' tax dollar. And so that's the primary focus. At the end of the budget process, each department will have an allocation. And I think that's where purchasing steps in and helps them get the most bang for the buck. Secondly, is to do that in an adequate and timely manner. So we don't want to be a roadblock and have all these policies for them. We want to do it in a time-effective manner for them so they can get on with their, whatever they need to do. And thirdly, everybody's favorite is to ensure that we're following our policies and state procurement statutes. And that, that's probably the largest challenge, but I think we do a pretty good job at that and assisting and, like I said, not being a roadblock. So the three major items, just going back to the top, are maximizing the tax dollar in a timely manner while remaining in compliance. So pretty straightforward. And if there's no questions at this time on the Purchasing Division's role, I'll move into the goals and accomplishments.
Sounds good, yeah.
Okay. And some of these, like Kirsten had mentioned, are anticipated. Obviously, we're only halfway through. And Amanda had already kind of alluded to this, but I think a large accomplishment will be to coordinate a training for city staff. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. That's next. Amanda didn't mention this one yet. Maybe she did. We're coordinating a training related to contractual language and certificates of insurance. And we actually talked about it today. Talked about bringing Ed Ben Tell from MRRP to highlight some topics and maybe some staff interjection there as well. I think that's important to show them some real-life examples of why we require what we do require and that we are trying to help and protect the city's best interests. So that'll be a good accomplishment. Amanda did allude to this one, and that's, we're going to select a contract and certificate of insurance tracking software program that we would like to implement that meets the city's needs, but also falls into a realistic budget for the city. We've looked at a couple of programs. I think Recordables was the name of one, and Origami Risk. The price range is very, of course, but we're looking for a cost effective, not, not anything huge there. So we'll be back with more information on that later. Another accomplishment was we administered a successful RFP process that allowed the council to fund the Building Community Grant Program. And we funded the Disking for Kids Program where the youth in this valley got to learn life skills along with disc golf with that nonprofit. And we also funded the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition's drop-in center rent expense for one year, which I think's been a success so far. To touch on a couple of goals for 2020. Pending the approval and funding, we would like to implement a software and certificate of insurance tracking. I know that Finance has alluded to this, and Amanda, we are kind of a small staff and we do jump around and help each other within the Finance, HR Department. And so I think that would be a great tool to streamline some of our processes and just help us better manage those things. And the last goal, and it's been a goal of mine for a few years, we haven't seen great success with this one. But it would be to work directly with other local purchasing professionals to see what, there's got to be opportunities in this valley for cooperative purchasing opportunities. One that really just kind of pinged at me this year and just jumped off the page to me was we found the NOVAC group through a cooperative purchasing arrangement, used them for our recruitment process. And then I read in the paper a few weeks later that the town of Clarkdale is using the same firm. And I think there's just, if we open those lines of communication, you know, there could have been some savings there. And that's one small example, but I think there's a lot of examples like that. So with that, I think that everything purchasing does, if we do a good job of what we're doing, we support the city's vision and mission and hope to inspire a vibrant community. So with that, I'll leave it open to questions.
What would help you reach that last goal of working with other procurement offices, purchasing offices? I mean, what?
The biggest challenge so far has been identifying a purchase that aligns timely with another entity's purchase. So it's probably a little better pre-planning or just getting out ahead and putting it out there. Hey, we're open. Give us a call if you ever think that there's a purchase you may need to make that we could all collaborate on. I, I spoke with the Cottonwood Creek School District Finance Director and we, we had a little hit there where we thought we found something that we could collaborate on, but mostly timing. We're all, we're often purchasing the same things, but it doesn't line up in the same timeframe.
So you guys don't get together. And, I mean, it sounds kind of corny, but I mean, just to, you know, just to have a, I don't know, I mean, just to get together.
Purchasing nerds. We haven't yet, and you know, like the city of Sedona doesn't, at the time, they didn't have a specific purchasing person. So it's a little decentralized out there.
Yeah, I just, I agree with you. I think it seems natural. We've got so many different governmental agencies around here that, that it's like pretty natural that we try to coordinate on purchasing.
Yeah, and I felt confident that we could lead the process if they didn't have the staff that was there. I'm confident in our ability to go ahead and spearhead that when there's opportunities, so.
Okay. Well, whatever we can do to help you with that.
Great. Any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Wasting no time.
Wasting no time. I only have five minutes and I promise I'll get done in ten.
The only reason we implemented the five-minute thing was because of you, Mr. Rooney.
It's not me, it's you guys. You're the ones asking questions.
That's okay. You're blocking the camera behind you. There's a camera there too.
Tick-tock, Casey.
Over here.
Time's up, Casey.
You're going to have to put it right behind you, I think. That's all right, that's all right.
There you go. Thank you.
Perfect.
War me out.
Well, now I can't see Tom Whitmer, so that's not.
Okay, City Council, Mayor, thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to talk about economic development. And you have a book in front of you. It's only going to take two minutes and 30 seconds to look at the book. But I'd like you to look at it, if you wouldn't mind. Just take a second. There's an agenda on the first page. There's the accomplishments and goals on the second page and performance indicators. Then there's another page that is targeted clusters. And then right past that is the 2015 Cottonwood Focus on Success Plan. So that page right in front of the plan is a consolidated report. It's one page that kind of covers about 25 pages on the next, when you look at, when you look at the plan right here. Right before the plan is the abbreviated version of the plan. So that was the 2015 to 2020 plan. And then the tab back behind that is the 2009 plan. So you've got 10 years of plans. First plan, we worked through, completed the plan. Now we're working on the second plan. We're about three and a half years into it. So, that is the plan. The accomplishments and goals that you see are... 2019, we accomplished what we are, the second page, I'm sorry to that. There's the table of contents, the second page is the accomplishments and goals. And we have focused a lot on Old Town over the years. And my goal now is, I think, Old Town is about, I would say about ninety percent occupied right now. There's some people that move in and out every once in a while, but it's very well-occupied. And what I'm working on now is moving out to this area between Cottonwood and Camp Verdi, 260. So, there's a major corridor there. Then, this corridor is between Cottonwood and Jerome and Camp, or Clarkdale. Then, the other corridor, all these corridors run right into Cottonwood. So, we're strategically in a good location. This is the corridor between Sedona and Cottonwood. And I just took some time today just to put some highlights on some of the projects we're working on or we're going to be working on in the next few years. I wish you could see this better, but Crossroads at Mingus, really, that's not in Cottonwood, it's right next to Cottonwood. Inspiration is a hundred-and-ninety-two-unit project, apartment project, that is in the planning process right now. Bob Porter is working on this project with Bill Jump. So, I appreciate you being here, two years, two years, the bright, bright, grace of God, April. Good. So, that's going to be five-hundred-and-fifty-five units, that's what Bill told me. Inspiration is also your project, so there's Inspiration One and Inspiration, there's an Inspiration Two. And Inspiration Two is overall of, let me see, where am I? Miller Street, huh?
Lillard and May.
Lillard and May. May, excuse me. So, they're working on both of those projects. So, those are going to be two big projects. Let's see, we've got Verdi Valley Medical Center, starting a new project, you're probably aware of these projects. I wanted to bring in Wild Tonic, it's kombucha. They're probably, I think, the fastest-growing company in this town. And they're doing very well, they're distributing their product all over the country. So, it's a company for us to keep our eyes on and support. So, I've got a phone call into them, we've been playing phone tag over the holidays, but I'm working very closely with them. Old Town, another major corridor that is moving along in pretty good shape. I have a tag here, so it's Maynard Masonic Lodge. You know, he's got the Masonic Lodge up on top of the hill. And I think, when he gets that going, that's going to kind of change, not the complexity, but the visibility of Old Town. It's going to be a big, big project, it's going to bring a lot of visibility to our community. Of course, we've got coffee shops, we've got Dutch Brothers, we've got Starbucks, we've got Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, these are just a few of the many projects that are happening or are going to happen in the community. So, I get kind of excited about that. Out here is Jay Stuckey's project, eighty-nine and Vine. That's probably going to be the biggest project that ever, I think, that ever hit this town. And that's going to start happening pretty soon. That is, from what I understand, about two thousand units, housing units, which is about four thousand people. You think about the size of that compared to our existing community, that's going to have a big impact on our community. Those are just some of the projects. Oh, the Heartland Senior Care Project is a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred units, out off of eighty-nine A, going towards Sedona. So, there's just a whole bunch of big projects, small projects and big projects, that I see on the horizon that are going to start happening now. So, I just, that's my report on economic development. I can just tell you, the, you know, the accomplishments and goals are what they are, but this is the future right here. And it looks pretty bright, and I think we've got to be aware that this is going to happen and prepare our community for this kind of growth, because it's going to happen. These are just the projects, some of the projects that I know of that are going to happen. So, that's it. Any questions? You guys always have questions.
I just have a quick one, and it's kind of shifting our focus back into the Arts and Entertainment District. We implemented it, what are we going to do to maximize it, or promote businesses and, you know, using the benefits of the district?
So, you're talking about not just Old Town, but all the way out to here, right? That's something that is, what I've seen is, this area, there's some businesses that are moving out here right now. And there's a little bit of a challenge through here, with this area. The Old Town District is where it is and where it probably needs to be. But you're talking about going out this way, towards Main Street. And this area is starting to fill in, and I think eventually, this will also. So, it's just natural growth, because people want to be here.
Is your department doing anything, though, to get information out to different businesses that, hey, we have this district? There are some, you know, minor benefits to certain businesses to be in this district?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm talking to people all the time, every day. And I'm on statewide boards where I promote this area. There's a lot of organic growth that happens, I get contacted by people, or I reach out to people. So, I don't just sit and wait for people to come to me, I go to people. So, yeah, I'm working on that. And I'm on the Arizona Association for Economic Development Board, I'm on the NACOG Board, all these people I work with. I'm on the VV Rio Board, so those people are aware of what we're doing. I help them, they help me. So, it's a natural draw. It's a little bit more challenging when you start getting over this way, but, I mean, Old Town's filled up. And it's going to stay that way, I hope. But, anyway, yeah, there's a lot of discussion going on in Cottonwood. People are very aware of our community and they want to be here. I got a call from a guy just the other day that is interested in bringing in another wine tasting room. So, every day, I'm getting leads and contacts, and I try to follow up on them as best I can. I did, by the way, you know, it's me and my assistant Cindy, and she does a great job. I had Kathy Bazan, and I had a grant, and she was doing great. I mean, she was busy consulting with people all the time. She's gone, we ran out of the money. So, I do have a request to fill her position, and I think we can do that, I can produce more and better projects for this community. But people are still very interested in Cottonwood, they're looking at our community, I'm getting calls all the time, talking to people. I talked to somebody yesterday who's interested in bringing in another shop in Old Town. It's just, every day, I get a contact, and I try to do my best to follow up on that stuff.
And I appreciate that, and I think maybe it's, this might be more of a discussion for Thursday or Friday for the retreat, thinking long-term, how to strategically leverage this district that we've created, how we can market it, promote it, and make it really incentivize businesses to come to the entire district. I don't necessarily need to take time up tonight, but that is something I'd be interested in discussing further.
Sure, sure. I'd appreciate your input.
We have, did you have a question?
I do have a question. So, I mean, these are all great projects, and I'm happy to see this happening around here, but is it, it is a departmental presentation, so what did the Economic Development Department, if any, what was their role in bringing any of these to town?
Well, I got a gentleman here right now that's working on a couple of big projects in this community. So, I'm in touch with Bill Jump all the time. You know, that's just one. Bob Porter's in the room. They can't do it without us, they can't do it, maybe they could do it without me, but I have to make the presentations to you guys and encourage them to be here. So, is that happening? And that's probably what I could say, if I wanted to brag myself up, on just about any project that comes in. I'm not the person investing the money. I'm here as a contact with the city, do the best I can to welcome them to the community, to encourage them to come to the community, and that's what I do.
Okay, it just begged the question.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not going to take credit for all this, I'm telling you, that's what's happening. And I think it's important for you to know that, maybe you already knew it. I'm not telling you anything you didn't already know, but I follow up on these things.
Vice Mayor, you're good, okay. Are there any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Whitmer, evening.
Mr. Mayor, here was the Council. My name is Tom Whitner, and unlike Jeff, who has a department of three, I'm a department of two, me and I. So, good. I thought it was important for me to stand before you tonight, kind of give you an overview of what the Natural Resources Department actually does. With the number of, with the number of new councilmen that we have here, I think it was just as important to do that as talk to you about my goals and accomplishments, and then kind of work my goals and accomplishments into that presentation. So, the vision of the Natural Resources Department is to ensure a sustainable supply of water is legally available to the city to meet the needs of its customers through build-out. It's a pretty important goal, if you think about it, because without water, all of Casey's economic development would not exist, it would not occur. We need water, water is essential to everything that we do in this valley, and therefore, that vision kind of spells things out to the importance of this. The biggest threat to accomplishing that goal is perhaps the ongoing statewide adjudication of water throughout the state. That effort is an attempt to try and prioritize, quantify, and ultimately adjudicate who has the right and how much water they can actually use in this state. And that ultimately has the potential to limit and/or restrict how much water we can actually pump here in the Cottonwood area. By virtue of that fact, we are engaged in that process. Fortunately for the city, we happen to have a water attorney who's one of the best water attorneys in the state of Arizona that kind of leads that effort, and I provide support and backup from a technical standpoint to that effort. Now, some people might say that this effort has been moving at a glacial pace, because it was actually started in nineteen-seventy-five, and to date, they haven't adjudicated a single basin. But they're very close to wrapping up the adjudication of the San Pedro Basin, which was the initial beta test site. And the new special master with, to the adjudication court, has actually directed the Department of Water Resources to begin moving that effort up here to the Verdi. We are the next test case to be adjudicated. With that, you're going to see a tremendous amount of effort that is going to start occurring here over the next two or three years related to that effort. Fortunately for us, we are engaged at this point in time, have been watching everything that's been going on down the San Pedro. We have been engaging in that process in order to ensure that our concerns are being addressed in that effort and that a precedent setting isn't occurring that could ultimately impact us up here. As a sideline to that, it's directly related to the adjudication, but it's not part of the actual adjudication effort itself, are a couple of other efforts that were designed, or hopefully designed, to try and streamline the adjudication process. The first one was, we initiated a number of meetings which are ongoing with SRP, Saurer Project, and with the Abapachi Nation, to see if we could develop some sort of an agreement between the three of us that we could then take to the adjudication court and get it adopted into that process. That wouldn't remove us from the adjudication, but it would at least take the concerns from our two biggest obstacles, potentially, that being the Abapachi Nation and Saurer Project, with regards to our ability to continue pumping at the current rate we're doing, or actually increasing that to meet the projected needs of our customers through build-out. In addition to that effort, which is ongoing, and everything seems to be ongoing with adjudication, is an effort that was started by the Kyle Center for Water. Kyle Center for Water was created about three or four years ago, and they immediately convened a group of about twenty attorneys that represent the primary water users around the state. Their goal was to see if they could come up with a solution that would streamline the adjudication process. Either by creating a process that they could take to the adjudication court, they could streamline it, or by creating some sort of legislative solution, that they could take the legislature and ultimately get it adopted into statute and bypass the adjudication process. Whenever you get twenty attorneys together, no offense to Helen McHenry, it's tough to come up with a unanimous decision on what to do. So, ultimately, they created a subcommittee of technical folks, which I was asked to participate in. And our water attorney, Mr. Brown, also is a member of that twenty, group of twenty attorneys that sits on the primary committee. In fiscal year nineteen, I worked with that group throughout the year, and ultimately co-authored a concept paper that was a, could have been a solution for the adjudication in the Verdi Basin itself. We presented it to the full committee, and of course, you've got twenty attorneys with twenty different agendas, and it kind of got bogged down. But it's still being kind of meshed through the process, so to speak, by those attorneys and by several other groups that are working on some sort of solution. The committee that I sit on still meets at the will of the full committee, and we're still working on things to see if we can come up with a solution that could speed up the process. In addition to that, realizing that the adjudication provides a lot of uncertainty, and not knowing whether one of these settlement opportunities could be a solution, or whether a decision order by the court ultimately is going to be the solution, we want to prepare the city in advance of anything that may come out of that. What we began here a couple of years ago was, we came up with the idea of recharging all of our reclaimed water back into the aquifer. By doing that, and applying for the specific permits with the Department of Water Resources and Arizona Department of Quality, we could accrue groundwater storage credits. By accruing those credits, it's kind of like a bank account. It allows us, somewhere down the road, should we get limited by, in our use of groundwater, we could use those credits to continue pumping at the rate we're currently pumping at in order to meet the demands of our customers. A very important thing. So, in fiscal year nineteen, one of the primary things that we were working on was trying to get those permits in place so we could begin actually recharging the reclaimed water. Initially, we submitted an application at the direction of the Department of Water Resources for what was known as a pilot permit. Unfortunately, we went ahead and submitted the pilot permit application, only to find out after the fact that they had finally finished the rules, and in the rules, they decided that they wanted four monitoring wells as a part of that effort. Well, that's an exorbitant cost to us by having to drill four new monitoring wells just for that pilot permit. So, we withdrew our permit and spent the remainder of, well, the remainder of fiscal year nineteen up till November, redoing the application for the full permit. And we got that introduced actually in November, so that was something that we accomplished. And now, we're in the waiting process for the Department of Water Resources to review that permit and hopefully come back to us with either questions, or approval, or denial of that permit. The permit takes some, quite a bit of effort. The permit that we submitted, that I submitted in November, was actually about six-hundred-and-thirty-eight pages long. And that didn't include the model that we created for that effort, a pretty exhaustive effort. So, that's something we're doing in lieu of the adjudication process to prepare ourselves for whatever comes out of the adjudication. In addition to that, one of the things that we did, we've been ongoing for the last five years, is I also coordinate the efforts of the United States Geological Survey in regards to the ongoing studies and groundwater and gravimetric monitoring that we're doing here in the valley. I do that on behalf of all the cities and towns and the county, Arizona Department of Water Resources and the Abapachi Nation. I do that on behalf of all the cities and towns in the county, Arizona Department of Water Resources and the Apaches Nation here in the Verdi Valley. This effort is an attempt to try and maintain some sort of continuity with regards to our monitoring efforts to see if there, what kind of trends are occurring with our groundwater elevations, with our surface water flows, and so on, and how much water's being stored in the ground. That's an effort that I facilitate and coordinate every year, and we'll be doing that next year as well. In addition to that, I was asked to participate on the Long-Term Water Augmentation Committee of the Governor's Water Advisory Council at the Arizona Department of Water Resources. I participate in that effort, and that's an effort to try and identify alternative sources of water that can be augmented into these areas statewide where we anticipate there being an unmet water demand at some point in time over the next fifty years. In addition to that, I serve as the Technical Chairman for the Northern Arizona Water Use Association, which, which we are a member of. And this is a group that is very important for this area here because it's a kind of a coalition of municipal water providers here in the area. There's eight cities and cities that are included in that. And in it, as part of that effort, we monitor and track the legislature for any water-related legislation that may come out, identify the potential impacts to the cities in this area here, and engage the legislature when necessary in order to wherever, whenever it's necessary to, to do so. Perhaps the biggest challenge we have in, in this year, this upcoming year, is getting the permits back from the Department of Water Resources and actually engaging recharge of our reclaimed water up here. The goal is to actually ultimately end up recharging all of the, of the unused reclaimed water back into the system, which serves two, two purposes. One, it gives us a bank account that we can potentially use somewhere down the road. But more importantly, it reduces how much water we're actually depleting the aquifer for, aquifer for, which would, which potentially has the possibility of impacting the rivers, the flow in the river. And with that, I'll address any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Whitmer?
Great presentation. Thank you.
I have just one question, and maybe it's a comment. Under your goals for 2020, I don't see purchasing any wet water rights. Isn't that something that we should really be focused on?
I left it out because it's, it's kinda come to a stalemate at this point in time. We've pretty much exhausted everything we've, we can come up with in order to find water rights that are actually available. It sounds easy to do. The problem you have with it, when you start buying surface water rights, when you buy a surface water right, you have to do severance and transfer with the Department of Water Resources. That entails proving out how much water's actually there. And in most of the cases, these, the water rights that we have come across that were for sale, the amount of water that was actually there was insignificant compared to what the paper right was. As an example, Perkins Ranch. Perkins Ranch had a claim for, if I recall correctly, almost twenty-four thousand acre feet of water. When you start looking at how much that wa, that, that water right would actually prove up to be, it would've been closer to a hundred and twenty acre feet of water. So when you start looking at a, a cost of four to six million dollars for that right, and it realistically is only a hundred and twenty acre feet, not a good sale. Beaver Creek Golf Course was another one. You know, they had in excess of a thousand acre feet of water. We thought we could come up with an agreement there, but we started looking at it, it really proved up. They, they were really going to have closer to two hundred and fifty acre feet of water. And for the price that they're asking, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So.
Did either of those parties sell their water rights?
The who?
Did either of those parties, the Perkins or the?
Perkins, no. Beaver Creek ultimately didn't sell their water right, they sold the property. Because, you know, the surface water rights are pertinent to the land. That's why you have to do a severance and transfer. And so Beaver Creek did sell to, actually, it sold four or five times. Because a lot of people thought they were buying the water rights, and then they would call us and say, hey, wanna buy half our water rights? And you start telling them, explaining some surface water law, and they go, oh, gosh. And then they would back out of the deal with, that they were in.
Got it.
So, and also, one other thing came down from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. There's a, in statute, it says, you know, that water rights can be abandoned for lack of use. And one of the things that we were looking at, and then we had discussions with SRP over this, was the fact, was the potential to pick up a lot of these lands that had historical water rights still, but now have buildings and roadways and everything on them. Well, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals came back and said, I'm sorry, if you've got a house that's been there for fifty years, you've got a home that's been there, or roadway that's been there for ten or fifteen years, that's an abandoned water right. So that kind of eliminated that avenue that we were pursuing at one point in time this last year as well.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, super.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's our final presentation for tonight, and we'll be back at the next session with more presentations and at the Strategic Planning on Thursday and Friday.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We had a motion and two very eager seconds. Roll call, do it. No, we don't need a roll call. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.